All right. Thank you very much, and you have the pleasure of closing out the evening. I'm going to start without, or Mr. French. County has a lot of federal COVID relief money. There's a lot of it left. How should the county spend it?
One of the things that we focused on in the last couple of years is really keeping people in their homes. Rental relief has been a big item, as well as trying to support a business community so that they could transition through this very difficult time. So we're continuing to support those efforts. We continue to offer rental assistance as part of our program to be able to prevent homelessness, that's keeping people in their homes, and we'll continue to do that. Now, if you're talking about ARB funds, ARB funds is a different category of funds and has a different set of requirements and also a different set of conditions that apply to it. So there is a difference between CARES funding and ARB funding. ARB funding is, in my opinion, the epitome of red tape because of all of the regulations you have to adhere to to be able to finally make an allocation. For CARES, we can make a decision and allocate those monies right away.
Ms. Yates.
Yes, so the county received about $101 million in American Rescue Plan funding, and we need to make sure that we are finding a transparent and responsive way to allocate those dollars to support our community in ways to help recover from the pandemic. We've already heard that housing is necessary, and investments in childcare are also critical. Just looking at childcare, 10% of providers closed down during the pandemic. That means businesses closing, employees losing jobs, and it crunches our workforce because so many families, so many parents I've met are home during the day when I'm canvassing because they had to leave the workforce because they could no longer afford or access childcare. So those are a couple of investments that are really important to pursue. And a third would be piloting the expansion of eligibility criteria for our senior citizen property tax exemption to make sure our seniors have a safe place to continue to live.
Mr. French, do you want to add some more?
So the issue with regard to property tax relief, that's not a county issue. That's done at the state level. The issue of childcare, again, is a state issue. It's not a county issue. So we are focused on being able to make investments that are multi-generational. You know, how do you invest a dollar today and make sure that it serves the community for not just this year, but decades to come? And when you look at the investments we've made, that's the general trend of our investment strategy. How do we get multi-generational return on those investments? And everything is done in the public. Everything's done by request or proposal?
Ms. Yates.
We have the funding. The county has spent very little of the American Rescue dollars available to us. So we need to be finding ways that invest in the needs of our constituents, and blaming the larger issue on the state or anyone else is just a lack of leadership, in my opinion. So we need to make sure that we're leveraging that funding in a way that's really effective.
Ms. Yates, this question will be for you. Some action taken by county commissioners this week on Camp Hope to sue the state for violations happening there within the city of Spokane. Do you support that decision?
The issue around Camp Hope and homelessness generally in the county is a real illustration of an abdication of leadership from our county commissioners. Camp Hope did not emerge overnight, neither did homelessness in our region. We should have been working 10 months ago when Camp Hope first was established on state property here, hand in hand with the city and the state, to make sure that we were developing effective solutions both for the people living in Camp Hope and the area of businesses and residents to address the challenges there. Instead, we're now using taxpayer dollars to sue the state to try and abate the camp. This is a lack of, again, proactive leadership and foresight.
Mr. French.
Camp Hope started out as a protest down at City Hall and was allowed to grow into a camp out on property owned by Washbuck. These are decisions that were allowed to be made inside the city of Spokane. It's unfortunate that my opponent doesn't understand separation of powers and the rule of law in the state of Washington. I cannot go into a city and dictate to them how they're going to operate their programs, but I can partner with them, which we have done with the city of Spokane. In the last two and a half years, we have spent, the county has spent $48.8 million on homelessness and homeless prevention. So we are a partner with the city, and we'll continue to be. The sheriff has the authority to go in and remove that nuisance, and he's indicated he will do that. As county commissioners, we stand with him. It's interesting, people criticize for lack of decision, and we made a decision.
Ms. Yates.
Respectfully, I understand the different jurisdictions, and passing money through is not sufficient to address our regional challenges, especially those around homelessness. We need to be working, doing more with the city in partnership to address these challenges. And really, listening to my opponent reminds me of a member of a group project who refuses to do any of the work and then gets upset when they get a failing grade.
Mr. French, you have the last answer.
The Cannon Street Shelter was built with county dollars. The transition facility purchased and built over at Salvation Army, county dollars. VOA Youth Facility, county dollars. Family Promise, county dollars. We are there as partners with the city, but because it's inside the city of Spokane, they are the lead, and we will support them, and that's what we've done time and time again.
Thank you. Mr. French, you get this question first. Some county officials have long argued that it's time to build a pay-up jail. Do you support that? And would you support raising taxes to pay for it?
Our current jail was built in 1984, and within two years was overpopulated. It is functionally obsolescent. It's a dangerous facility, not only for inmates, but also corrections officers. It needs to be replaced. We've had fatalities and suicides in that facility, and to not say that you're going to replace that jail says that you're okay with the suicides, you're okay with folks losing their lives in a facility that's not contemporary. The county will save $4 million a year in operational expenses by going to a new facility. Now, in addition to a new jail, I also support a community transition facility or community corrections facility that offers the programs necessary to transition people back into the community. Just can't open the door and let them out in the community. You have to provide them services so they can be successful.
Ms. Yates.
I don't support the construction of a new jail because it is an incredibly costly intervention that does little to nothing to improve our public safety. The last estimate we received when I was at the county in 2018 for constructing a new jail facility was $400 million. $400 million! And that was in 2018, before the rising cost inflation and construction materials. There are recommendations and there are resources right now at the county to improve the safety of the individuals who are held in our county jail and the people who staff the county jail as well. In addition to that, there are investments that we can and should be making to improve public safety in the long run, both immediately and upstream investments. This is my area of expertise. I'm confident that as your county commissioner, I can champion these investments to steward taxpayer dollars and improve safety for the entire community.
Mr. French.
What my opponent wants to do is bring programs into this community that have failed in other communities. We don't need to repeat the failures. Other communities have experienced. We should be learning from what is going on. The cost estimate she gave you was grossly inaccurate. It's close to half of that. So if you're not familiar with what the price is in the facility, how can you make a statement about whether it's too expensive or not? There are a lot of improvements that have been made to the system since she's left, and we'll continue to make improvements as we move forward.
Ms. Yates.
Every single program that I recommended or implemented at the county was the product of months of research, data analysis, and planning with local experts and national experts. The fact that more work is supported by the opponent is really an illustration of his failure to plan proactively and to understand that his continued approach to criminal justice is continuing to pour a lot of money into a failed criminal justice system that has actually increased crime, produced a staggering rate of readmissions, and created a staffing crisis at detention services.
Thank you. This next question is for Ms. Yates. Spokane City Council recently approved a moratorium on development in LeToa Valley, citing concerns about infrastructure, particularly transportation. Understanding that that's the city, that there is development out there that's county, there's county development in other places, is the county doing enough to prepare for the future?
I supported the neighbors and residents in the LeToa Valley along the US-195 asking for this development moratorium because we have to and we can. Plan for growth, plan for affordable housing, while ensuring there's adequate infrastructure and the protection of the natural resources that we rely on now and in the future. The county has to do a better job of making sure that we have the infrastructure to support our growth. And right now, there's been a process of just rubber stamping developer permits that creates all sorts of infrastructure problems, like flooding in West Terrace, the traffic and safety issues and concerns along 195, and similar concerns now emerging in the Indian Trail Nine Mile area as well.
Mr. French.
So I served on the planning commission in the late 1990s when city staff said, "We want to put 15,000 residents in the LeToa Valley corridor." And I, along with Stan Sterling, said, "No, you don't have the infrastructure to support it." And so staff came back several months later and said, "We think we can put a frontage road that will extend from Hatch Road all the way to Sunset Boulevard and handle traffic." And based upon that assurance from the city, we allocated growth to the valley. 25 years later, not a single dime has been spent in that valley to build that frontage road. Millions of dollars have been collected in mitigation fees, taxes, revenues, to go to that infrastructure, and the city has spent it in other parts of South Hill. The city needs to commit to come back and build that frontage road as they promised back in the late 1990s. And, you know, it's interesting, again, there's no urban growth area in the LeToa Valley area that is county-controlled. It's all controlled by the city of Spokane. It's their obligation.
Ms. Yates, for rebuttal.
I would just note that the US-195 corridor extends into the county as well, so the county does have a responsibility to respond to the needs of constituents there. I would also point out that my opponent was on city council when that development was approved and those fees started being collected, so I hope that he has some insight to share in terms of where that money went to.
I'm not supposed to have that. Mr. French, you're rebuttal.
I was on the city council when we were implementing the development regulations, which included empowerment zones, industrial areas, and commercial. Residential development regulations didn't happen until after I was gone. Keep in mind, we also experienced a recession during that period, and so there were other priorities. And I was on the bond resolution because the city was in default on its bonds. So this is a city issue. We cannot take county resources and spin it inside the city.
Mr. French, questions for you. County commissioners often serve on the STA board. If you take a look 20 years in the future, what should our public transit system look
So I am the longest-serving member on the STA board. This is my 20th year on that board. I've been nationally recognized as for leadership in public transportation by the American Public Transportation Association. In fact, I was voted Outstanding Board Member of the Year in 2008. I'm the only one in the state of Washington that's ever received that award. It's because of my expertise and my support for public transportation. That system will continue to grow. It will continue to meet the needs of our citizens. That's our obligation as a board. That's our commitment as an agency to this community. When I first got on that board, it was non-responsive, it was arrogant, and we changed that culture. Changed that culture to where now it's one of the agencies that is debt-free, debt-free, few in the nation that's debt-free, and provides incredible service. We survey our writers to make sure our service is good.
Yes, we have an incredible public transit system, and admittedly, my opponent has a very strong record on public transit. He supported the Moving Forward Initiative and the City Line, which is going to do great things for expanding access to public transportation. Unfortunately, he hasn't been as kind to other transportation initiatives in the county, like the safe routes to the schools operated by the Public Health District and other infrastructure and transportation needs across the county, like Euclid Bridge, which has been out of service for almost four years now at great personal cost to residents in the area, and of course, the traffic and safety issues you referenced earlier along US-195. So as your county commissioner, would you continue to champion public transit in the area, which is so important for decongesting our roads and cutting carbon, but also champion other transportation needs to make sure that those roads are safe?
Mr. French, for rebuttal. During my term in office as a county commissioner, I've been on the front side of bringing hundreds of millions of dollars in infrastructure dollars to this community. Facts matter. Euclid Bridge is owned by the railroad. It's a bridge in the middle of a rural area in Washington State that is not a high priority for Burlington Northern. Because of my relationships with Burlington Northern, not only did they come to the table and say, "Yes, we will agree to replace it," they gave us $3 million to do it, and the county will own it, so it will never be in that state again.
I would just add that it's important to make ourselves as elected officials accessible and responsive to the needs of residents in those areas, and I know that residents from Euclid Bridge to 195 to Indian Trail have felt like their concerns have fallen on death years.
Ms. Yates' question is for you. Another board that county commissioners often sit on or do sit on is the canvassing board, which finalizes elections. Do you believe the results of the 2020 election were affected by fraud locally or nationally?
No, I believe the 2020 election was legitimate. Any election fraud that might have occurred on a local or national level was so minute that it would not have affected the outcome of the election. I have full confidence in our local auditor's office, our secretary of state office at the state level, and I'm also really heartened that Kim Wyman, a Republican and former secretary of state here in Washington, is now working at the federal level to ensure the integrity of our election systems.
Mr. French.
I've served on the canvassing board for a number of election cycles, and I'm really confident that our election integrity here in the state of Washington is really high. I have not seen any evidence to the contrary, so I have no reason to question the legitimacy of the 2020 election or any other election. I do not know and have firsthand knowledge about election systems in other states in the country. I'm not going to be so arrogant as to suggest to you that I do, but I am confident about the state of Washington.
Ms. Yates, do you want to add anything?
No, thank you.
Mr. French. Question is for Mr. French. In recent years, Spokane County Commission has used some banked capacity of property taxes that were earmarked for roads and spent portions of them on other items. Is the county doing enough to maintain a quality road system?
So for the last couple of years, the county has used the banked capacity to be able to invest more money into our road system. Spokane County has the largest road system of any county in the state. There are counties on the other side of the state that have not had sufficient revenue to maintain their roads, and they're allowing paved streets to return to dirt. We do not have that situation. 2,500 linear miles of roads that we maintain, and those additional dollars go into the roads. Capital investments for other assets that are needed by the courthouse to be able to improve technology, to improve customer service, to improve efficiencies are, yes, good investments that can return for our taxpayers. And as long as we can justify and show a good return to the taxpayer, then those are worthy investments.
Ms. Yates.
There are significant infrastructure needs across District 5. You've heard me talk about Euclid Bridge, you've heard me talk about US-195 corridor, and also West Terrace and the West Plains as well. We need to make sure that we are delivering on road construction and maintenance for residents across the county. Their taxpayers, they rightfully expect and deserve to have their infrastructure constructed and maintained.
Mr. French, do you want to add?
So my opponent has mentioned the West Terrace area twice now. The West Terrace drainage issue was created by a developer. It wasn't created by the county, and it was created long before I ever got to the board. I did champion taking 5.5 million out of ARB funds to fix the drainage issue in the West Terrace area. Wasn't a problem that I created, but it is a problem that I'm going to solve. And so we are going to be getting underway with construction to be able to fix the drainage issue. Again, 195, the problem on 195.
Sorry, your time is up. Ms. Yates.
I would just highlight the fact that the county continues to permit development in high-risk drainage areas. And so even if there is a very delayed solution, ultimately and finally, for West Terrace residents, we continue to create the same problems with our growth and planning at the county, and that needs to change.
This question is for Ms. Yates. When selecting the medical physician on the new health board, recently, the commissioners selected a naturopathic doctor, opting against some medical doctors who applied. Did you support that decision?
I would not. I would make sure to prioritize selecting a medical doctor, a physician, or a nurse to provide that medical expertise on the board of health. I was really troubled by the way that our county commissioners and the board of health handled the termination of our health officer in the middle of a pandemic. This was at a moment that was critical to preserving trust in our public health institutions, and instead, it was completely eroded. So as county commissioner, I would champion restructuring the board so that it really reflects the spirit of state law that was recently passed to expand participation. That includes, as I mentioned, including a medical physician or nurse on the board. Would also include adding representatives from municipalities across the county to the board, as well as tribal representation. And finally, I would just add that it's really important that we also create a public and transparent process for the hiring of a new health administrator.
Mr. French.
So from the early 1970s until 2011, the Health District Board did not have a single doctor on it. Forty years, and not a single doctor. In 2011 was the first doctor appointed to that board. You know who appointed him? Me. And that was Dr. Lux. I appointed him not because he was a doctor. I appointed him because I was looking for diversity of thought on the board, because we already had a doctor. We have a health officer, and we have staff. It's interesting to me, the county followed the law to the T, to the T, and now people are complaining about the law. You know who passed the law? The Democratic Legislature in Olympia. Mr. Riccielli could not convince his own party that you need a doctor on the Health District Board because it's an administrative board. It is not a medical board. Please don't confuse the two. It's an administrative board. Even the Democrats didn't agree that it should be a doctor, and I agree with them.
Ms. Yates.
I would just, no problem. I think that, to my earlier point, there's been such a loss of trust with the Health District, in part because of the questions around how we are prioritizing health experts during a pandemic, that it's really important to make sure that we're including that medical expertise on the board.
Mr. French.
So there was a lack of trust, and it was a lack of trust in Dr. Lux. He would say one thing and do something else. And so that's what I was hearing overwhelmingly. We hired Dr. Velasquez. Did anything happen as a result of hiring Dr. Velasquez in this pandemic? No. No, we continued on. It will continue on under his leadership as our medical officer.
Mr. French. Spokane County has grown by 140,000 people since the last time we added a Spokane Superior Court judge. Is it time we do that?
You know, during that period of time, the laws have changed dramatically. In fact, Supreme Court just indicated last year that possession is no longer a criminal activity. So there's a lot of things that have happened over this last period of time with regard to the courts. Now, they keep on focusing on, you've got 12 judges, but we have eight county court commissioners that also function as judges. So there's 20 judicial officials, and you're talking about adding one more. Adding one more is a $900,000 idea, but even more importantly, you have to have a court, and we don't have any space in the courtroom or the municipal building to be able to provide that additional court. So we had a conversation with the presiding judge for Superior Court, said, "Would you be willing to operate a night court?" They said, "No." We could get double use out of the courtroom. And they said, "No."
The approval from the state legislature for adding a 13th judge happened in 1997, and Superior Court has, in the four years when I was at the county, beginning in 2018 at the very least, has been steadfast in making the request for a 13th judge to the Board of County Commissioners. The fact that they have failed to approve this position and they have failed to problem-solve in terms of how to fund it and where to house it is, again, an illustration of a lack of foresight and proactive planning. We lag behind state standards in terms of our case processing times in Superior Court. This adds to the significant population of people held pre-trial in our jail, people who have not yet been convicted of a crime. That is incredibly expensive for the county to pay to house them, and it's incredibly expensive for those individuals and costly for them to be away from their family, work, treatment, and education. By creating this 13th position, we can make sure that we're moving cases quicker through the system, which is going to save us money in the long run.
Mr. French.
Being good stewards of your taxpayer dollars is one of the requirements of a good county commissioner, and that's what we have done. During this last period of time, two and a half years of COVID has changed a lot about our lives. It's also changed a lot about the courts. One of the things we've done during that period of time is we've gone to a complete electronic digital system, where before, the delays in administering the law was done because it was very antiquated. Now they have the best technology.
Again, we need to be thinking proactively and holistically when we're making investments when it comes to public safety. Creating a 13th judge, making investments that actually reduce the population of people who need to be in jail while increasing our safety long-term saves us money. That's the way we need to be thinking about stewarding taxpayer resources.
Ms. Yates' question is for you. If our community were to experience a new pandemic and hospital officials were saying we're overflowed, would you consider approving a mask mandate, should you be on the board?
That would really, I think, be up to our health experts. That's why it's so important to, once again, re-establish trust with our medical experts. Clearly, we're at a different point in the pandemic right now, which is wonderful, and our public health experts and medical experts and the science should be leading those decisions. If we come to a point where we're facing another pandemic, then we need to center the science and center the medical expertise to guide us through that. Regardless of the context of the pandemic, it should not be Jay Inslee or Al French or me making the decision about mask mandates. It should be the role of our public health officials.
Mr. French.
The role of the health official and the mandates for a mask come from the state, not here locally. They come from the governor, not county commissioners. And so if, in fact, we experience another pandemic, and I would point out that I've been through several of them, COVID just happened to be the last, I think it's between the individual and their doctor as to whether they should be wearing a mask or not. Clearly, what we're finding out now is that the science that was purported was not accurate. And so a lot of decisions were made, a lot of lives were disrupted based upon bad science and bad decisions. I think it's up to each individual to seek their own medical advice and follow it so that it meets their needs.
Ms. Yates.
I don't have anything to add, thank you.
Anything I have? Mr. French. I think it's time for closing statements. Let's see, that last question was, so Al, you go first.
It's been an honor and privilege to serve you over the last It's been an honor and privilege to serve you over the last 12 years and experience matters. We're going into a recession. I've been with the city and with the county as they transition through a recession. There are critical decisions that have to be made to maintain service. When you talk, when you look at the county, it has grown, but you know what hasn't grown? A number of employees. We still operate at 2,000 employees today, just like we did 20 years ago. It's because we use better technology, better science. And so that's what I'm going to continue to do. I want to continue to create jobs and economic opportunity in this community. I'm the only one in this race endorsed by Sheriff Kedisovich and law enforcement officers across this county because they know my commitment to public safety, and they know that I'm not going to introduce new programs that's going to take funding away from our law enforcement officers. I'm not going to defund the sheriff's office with programs that the county has no business to be in.
Ms. Yates?
I want to first thank the spokesman for hosting the event tonight. Thank you for moderating. Thank you, everyone in the audience, for attending. Thank you to my opponent for the conversation this evening as well. Mr. French has served in political office for 20 years, which should be commended. But it is also clear that it is time for new leadership. Over the last several months of this campaign, I have met with district residents who are frustrated by the lack of concern from their elected official. I've sat with union members who describe an atrophying workforce at the county because of current commissioners. And I have been to forums like this one, where my opponent blames everyone but himself for our rising crime, expansive homelessness, and high property tax bills. This isn't leadership. Our county residents deserve more than a politician. They deserve a county commissioner who will show up, pursue solutions, and work every day so we can thrive. I'm confident that my ability to creatively problem-solve and work across party lines will allow me to serve you well.
Thank you very much.